Good evening and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM, October 16th, 2012. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Stamey?
Good evening, Father Lord Jesus. Thank you for this beautiful day you've given us, Lord. Thank you for this opportunity to gather here, Lord, to make decisions, to make decisions for this entire county, Lord. I pray right now you ignite our hearts and our minds to make the right decisions, Lord, guide our decisions in all we do, and guide us safely back home. We ask these things in your son's precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, there's one item that I need to, that planning and zoning is asked to be moved in the agenda, and if you will notice, under Planning and Zoning Services, Item E, that rezoning will be moved to Item F, and Item F will be moved up to Item E. So we're just switching the place of those two items, the order in which they will be heard this evening. And with that change being made, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. I'd like to make the following announcement. The following item has been tabled and will not be heard at this meeting. ULDC-AM-12-10, which is an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend Chapter One, General Provision, Section 1.11.00, conversion of previous zoning districts, Chapter Four, Site Design Standards, Section 4.01.00, Site Design Standards for Base Zoning Districts, and Chapter 11, Variations, Section 11.04.01, applicability. Procedural requirements will be met according to Sections 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. If you are here in reference to this particular item, it has been tabled for this evening and will be re-advertised for a future meeting. The first item on the agenda is under Planning and Zoning Services, and we have a resolution requesting approval of a non-revenue streetlight request, and our presenter is Bert Foster of the Building Department, and that's Exhibit Number One. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you tonight is a non-revenue streetlight request for the intersection of Flakes Mill Road and Cook Drive up in District Five in the Fairview community. Staff received the request several months ago from the adjacent property owner citing several instances of vehicular accidents and increased crime. I went back and double-checked with the police department and found that there had, in fact, been at least six reported vehicular accidents since January 2010, and eight criminal activities ranging from theft to stolen vehicles in that same time period. The costs involved, we're looking at about $132 per year, which breaks down to $11 per month that the county will be asked to pay. Henry County DOT is aware of this request and has offered no objection. The applicant or the requister is in the audience tonight if you have any specific questions for him, and I'll be happy to answer any of your general questions.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
The area that Bert is speaking of is right on the county line, the Cav County line, and it is quite dark, and I know I've, there's been a couple of times where I've almost driven off the road in a particular area, so I do see a desperate need for lighting in that particular area.
Does any other board member have a question or comment? Hey, if not, you have before you approving the non-revenue streetlight request, and Mr. Holmes, since this lies in your district, I'll look to you for a motion.
So am I.
You have a motion to approve, a second by Mr. Preston. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Before I call the next item, I failed to mention something I wanted to do at the beginning of the meeting, and for those who may not be aware of this, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and in honor of that, we are all wearing pink in some form, and I know most of our staff members are as well, to bring attention to the fact that women should certainly have a mammogram because early detection and early treatment lead to much better outcomes. So Henry Medical Center each October has a Real Men Wear Pink campaign. I know Commissioner Bowman has been featured as one of the real men who wear pink, and I don't know if anyone else on this board has been selected for that or not, but we definitely want to show our support for that. And so what I'd ask is that if the board members and any of our staff that are wearing pink tonight, if you would come over, we would like to take a picture and have that. And Mr. Bowman would like to make a comment as well.
Well, I would like to make a comment because a couple of years ago, I was chosen for the Real Men Wear Pink, and having absolutely no idea that about, oh heck, about 14 or 15 weeks ago, that I would be sitting in the doctor's office and he would walk in and say, "Mr. Bowman, you have cancer." Those three words that you don't want to hear. I'm doing very well on my cancer treatments, everything's going fine, God's in control of this situation, and, but it is, it is really something, all the outpouring that's come just from, just from that, from people that I don't know, and from churches that I don't know that have sent me bulletins and told me that I'm on their prayer list and that they're, it's just awesome. And I mean, those cards and those things just happen to come, I mean, just at the right time, just when you might be at that little low spot. I mean, it hits you just at that time, and it's, it's awesome. So I appreciate you letting me make that comment, and I was, I was very happy to be with the Real Men Wear Pink because I've got family members that have passed away from cancer, and we're very involved in it, but thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. All right, reluctant staff members, I see you rolling your eyes over there. Come on over for a picture. The next item on the agenda this evening is an appeal to a zoning advisory board's approval of a conditional use. Valerie Miller of McDonough, Georgia, requests an appeal to the zoning advisory board approval of a conditional use for a non-commercial kennel located at 200 Laney Road, landlots 205 and 212 of the 7th District. The property is located within Commission District One. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning Services, Exhibit Number Two in your book. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. On August 9th, 2012, an appeal was filed with the clerk's office by Ms. Valerie Miller, who resides at 182 Laney Road. The appellant is requesting that the Board of Commissioners overturn an approval for a non-commercial kennel which was granted by the zoning advisory board on July 12th. Ms. Miller attests that the decision was based on erroneous and incomplete information and without due consideration to the impact on the neighborhood. The appellant's letter of appeal states that the appeal is filed on behalf of the neighbors listed on the petition, which is included in your package and can be referenced as Attachment 10. The specific relief being sought by the appellant is that the decision of the zoning advisory board be overturned. The appellant is here tonight to present the appeal.
Now, I know this item was, was heard at the last meeting, and the issue that we encountered at that time was the advertisement of this for public comment, correct?
That is correct.
All right, and so I think all of us are familiar with the case as it stands, and so now that it has been legally advertised, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. County Attorney, that we open this up for public comment for those speaking for or against, and then the board at that time can render a decision, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request to overturn the zoning advisory board recommendation? All right, if you would, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You are the, you are actually the applicant.
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple of other things I'd like to add if I might, in terms of public opinion. Is that a violation?
You're speaking in favor, so you have 15 minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. I am Dr. Valerie Miller. I reside at 182 Laney Road in McDonough and have so since 1995. One of the issues that came up at the last meeting was the concern about some of the citations that Cornelia Breiser and Marcus Mume have incurred, and one of the things I think that should be duly noted is a citation is issued to the owner of the animal, not the location. So any citations that might have been issued at her previous address in Henry County should be taken into consideration. Now, the complete list begins in May of 2007, where I have a field activity report from Animal Control, and this was, yeah, May 7th, and it says that Animal Control Officer Seven went out and posted a notice for barking and nuisance. The complaint said that four or five German Shepherds were barking, there were, there was unrest and often defecating on the property, and contention that at least one of them has been aggressive in the past. On May 24th, Code Enforcement issued two warnings, one for, let's see, adverse odors due to dog crap, quote unquote, and the number of animals, that they had too many animals and that they needed to reduce that number to three by the date of June 4th. This was issued on May 24th. On, out of order. On the 2nd of July, 2007, a complaint was again filed for barking dogs. Animal Control Officer wrote a final warning for barking canines. October 5th of 2010, this is, they're now residing at 200 Laney Road, a field activity report from Animal Control indicates that canines are barking all the time. Animal Control Agent Five left a barking notice on seven Shepherd-type dogs. So they've moved from seven, I'm sorry, from five dogs in 2007 to seven dogs in 2010. On the 27th of October, we called the police about the dogs barking. I believe they were out of town at the time. And then lastly, this past April, we filed a complaint with Code Enforcement again, and they received their, I guess this would be their third, fourth, third warning from Code Enforcement, second of which dealt with numbers, and they said they needed to reduce it to four. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of overturning the approval for the kennel? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of upholding the approval of the conditional use? Okay, yes, if you would, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and you also have 15 minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Jean Kessinger, and I provide kennel assistance for Cornelia and Marcus. I will address my concerns to the appeal and more specifically to the letter attached to the appeal dated August 9th, 2012, from Valerie Miller and Marion Ailer, whereby they seek to have the approval of the non-commercial kennel overturned. I will refer to Miller and Ailer collectively as petitioners or to the individual for purposes of clarity. Cornelia Breiser and Marcus Mume will be addressed as respondents. Petitioners assert in Attachment Two of where Cornelia's dog runs are located stating, quote, "It is in this precise area that the dogs, dog runs are located," end quote. The petitioners are incorrect. They have no knowledge of the precise location of the dog runs. These dog runs continually change location based upon the needs of the respondents. Is it cold? Is it summer? Is it winter? Do they need shade? Are they in the home? Ailer accused respondents of abusing her dogs to Animal Control. There's been numerous calls to, does this, is this working? Thank you so much. This is a field report dated June 28th of this year, whereby it states, "Complaintant states the owner has multiple German Shepherds on the property that are kept in inadequate conditions in a garage on the owner's property. Complaintant states that dogs are kept in small crates without the ability to stand, turn around, et cetera. He states the garage is not heated," oh, there's the paper, slash, "air-conditioned, and there is no ventilation." In direct response to Ailer's false accusation, you can see here where it states, "The officers involved," which was Code Enforcement and Animal Control. "The garage is ventilated and air-conditioned. Dogs are in all in good condition. Kennels were more than adequate and all were clean. All dogs have access to clean water in stainless steel buckets. All dogs kennelled outside had dog houses. Minimal barking was heard, and then only upon the officer's arrival onto the property. No violations seen at this property." Petitioner continues to state adverse conditions as of the filing of their appeal dated August 9th, in their August 9th letter, and cites a DVD submitted with the letter of appeal. Pictures attached to the petitioner's appeal and shown at the July 12th and September 4th meetings, which petitioner states are on this DVD, were acquired without permission from the arntalkennels.com website, as well as the private property of the respondents. With regard to the DVD, pictures, and video, there is cause for concern where there is an invasion of privacy under the rights of privacy laws. In addition, trying to, excuse me, I'm sorry, humiliate, intimidate, or otherwise be abusive in behavior through verbal comments, engineered episodes of intimidation, aggressive actions, or obscene gestures. Petitioners have intruded upon the respondent's right to peace and solitude, placing them in a false light in the public eye, using unapproved personal data without compensation for saying. Petitioners further state that the dogs were barking for over two hours. Only with a spliced tape of a great many recordings would the respondent dogs ever bark for over two hours. It did not happen in real life. In order to collect any recordings of respondent's dogs, one would need to position themselves on the respondent's property, and they still wouldn't get two hours. Respondents do not contend that their dogs do not bark. That's not the issue. They do bark. However, when they do bark, they do not meet the definition of a nuisance. Nothing alleged by petitioner proves respondent's dogs are public nuisances or have any adverse or negative impact on the neighborhood. Code violation has cleared them. Animal Control has cleared them. Petitioners have gone back as far as they can. They could have gone back to Canada, I think, if they would have tried, but I think the focus is on 200 Laney Road, not what happened at a different place. There was the insinuation that the respondents left the prior address because of the citations. That's incorrect. They all the while had been looking for a big enough property to move to, and they finally found it. Thus, they moved. They needed to apply for a kennel license, thus they did. Okay, moving forward. The respondent's dogs are allowed out on the property without restraint, under supervision. Petitioners state they cannot see the respondents, therefore the dogs are unsupervised. Evidently, in order for petitioners to believe the dogs are supervised, petitioners must be able to see the respondents, such is not required by law. On the other hand, the petitioners do not feel the same regarding supervision of dogs when it comes to their dogs. On one occasion, Cornelia called Ailer to let her know that her dog Shadow was in the pond and could not get out. On another separate occasion, one of Ailer's dogs drowned in the pond. Both incidents were due to negligence and supervision. Unfortunately, it cost one of their dogs its life. Petitioner produced a witness, Mrs. Minter, who states that she was on respondent's property to ask if a stray German Shepherd was theirs, and states that the dog was, the dogs were well behaved, and that the man had control of the dogs, and ends her testimony with fearful statements regarding the dogs. In reality, the incident happened more than two years ago. It did not have anything to do with the German Shepherd. She drove onto the property looking for her dog. Marcus raised his hand to stop her from driving further so that she did not run over his dog Jasmine. He also asked her not to get out of the car because he knew Jasmine would jump on her for affection, and Jasmine was wet. The witness, Mrs. Minter, I believe is her name, is not qualified to deem any dog as vicious or aggressive. We've had those professionals out on the property doing just that, and the dogs are anything but that. She is not a professional dog trainer, member of IACO, which is the International Association of Canine Professionals, a tester for AKC Canine, and Good Citizen, or a tester for the American Temperament Test Society, which we've already handed a packet to you, and I hope you've, you've read the letter from the young lady where it's included in this, where she lays out the temperament of all of the Mume Breiser dogs as being exceptional. She follows the petitioner's leads with fear mongering to the general public. More interesting to note is that on Attachment, okay. Here's a Attachment 10 that shows the, oh, here it is, right in front of me. The names of all the people that signed, basically it's complaint, in essence is what it is, of not wanting this kennel to be approved. Number seven is Bart Minter, and his name is, he signed over to the left and over to the right, and then printed his name underneath on the left side. He's one of the 11 people who signed on the petitioner's Attachment 10, yet Mrs. Minter did not sign, and she was the witness. But it seems quite curious that she would not sign along with her husband like everybody else did. Everybody else, the husband and wives are right above and below each other, yet Mrs. Minter's signature is not on there at all. With regards to Attachment 10, Ailer states this appeal is filed on behalf of the neighbors listed on the petition originally submitted, that is, the original petition. However, there is no approval addendum attached to the appeal whereby these people have given written approval for her to use this in her appeal. In addition, the original petitioner's signatures were obtained under false and misleading information as shown by petitioner's two signs. Stanley and Gloria Harris were told that Cornelia would have 30 dogs if the license was approved, and that's a direct quote, while others were told that the area would be rezoned. And anybody who passed their home was in fact told, say no to rezoning kennel. There's no rezoning going on here. This is, this is just an approval of, of a, you know, a non-commercial kennel. There's no rezoning. We're not gonna, we're not asking for it to be made commercial, nothing like that. So everybody who passed here, whether they were interested in it or not, basically was left with, the area's gonna be rezoned. And that's false. That was completely misleading. It is interesting to note how far and to what extent petitioners have gone to try to control respondents. Ailer has filed at least two false police, two false police reports. One states there is a signed document at the Henry County Police Department allowing her to videotape Mr. Mume. This is Page Two. That's not the case. There is nothing at Henry County Police Department that allows her to take pictures of Mr. Mume, or Cornelia, or their property, or dogs, or anything of that nature. And on another report stating that the marshal's grandson fell into the pond simply because Cornelia said they could use her side of the pond to fish, never happened. As well as contacting Animal Control and Code Enforcement with false complaints, which I showed you, Code Enforcement has said that, you know, they're abusing their animals, small crates and what have you. Given Miller's level of education in math, I find her regards with regards to Shutzun training, for lack of a better word, dribble. Any trained dog, including a Shutzun-trained dog, poses no threat of inherent danger, that's a direct quote from her, her appeal, to anyone. This type of training is the highest level of training available. The recall is absolute and without fail. Not all dogs are Shutzun material, but for those who are, they are impeccably trained, and they carry out their assignments. It is the untrained guard dog, such as the petitioner's Brown Dog, that charged the gate snarling, barking Keith Baird when I was invited to enter. Ailer had to put the dog up because it would not listen, but first she had to catch it. That's a dangerous dog to its owner and the general public. They have a sign on the gate, but small children do not read. It is my understanding that this dog already has a bite history at the tennis club where they used to take. The Brown Dog has exhibited, quote, "protective instinct," which is what she was trying to say the Shepherds do. They don't. As such, with no recall, this is exactly the type of dog that, quote, "has the capability of causing great harm to innocent people or animals," end quote. And that's directly using the petitioner's words against Cornelia and Marcus. I mean, that's exactly what her Brown Dog is. A dog that is Shutzun-trained is not a guard dog. There are different levels of Shutzun training. This is a three-part sport consisting of obedience, tracking, and protection. If you choose not to train your dog in the protection arena, you don't have to. Training a dog in Shutzuns is not just a sport for adults. Children train their dogs, six-year-old children train Shutzun. So there's, let's take the mystique and the terror out of this Shutzun. Let's not scare people with it, 'cause it's not so. Petitioners are overacting for the benefit of their appeal with the comment, quote, "We are now fearful about going over to maintain our property, not knowing if the dogs will be out and how they will react to our being there," end quote. That is just so not true. There is no fear from them dogs. It is, and they know it. They've been around those dogs. They've been in that house. They've been over, had dinner, in the pool and everything, but now that it suits them, suddenly they're dangerous. It is easier to recall a well-trained dog than it would be to recall petitioner's Brown Dog with the bite history and no training. Petitioners would have this commission believe that a trained dog is a dangerous dog. Ailer has called Cornelia on several occasions while Cornelia was out of town, screaming at Cornelia that the dogs were barking. I was at Cornelia's home, looking after her dogs. Cornelia, Cornelia immediately called me, and each time I would hear her ask, "Do you hear, do you hear your dogs barking, Cornelia?" And hold my cellphone up for her to hear, then ask Cornelia what she heard, and each time it was the same, nothing. Twice during these conversations, these different conversations with Cornelia, Ailer called her back to state they were still barking. Cornelia informed Ailer that I was on the property, and the dogs had not and were not barking, to which Ailer would slam the phone down and cut Cornelia off.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you because your time has expired.
Thank you.
But thank you for your comments.
I was almost done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board at this time if they have any questions for our staff. Sherri, is there anything else that you need to add or would like to add?
Well, I did fail to mention that Ms. Jerry Yoder is here from Animal Control. If you all do have any specific questions regarding some of the comments that were previously received.
Are there any questions? If not, you have before you a resolution. There are several decisions that can be made this evening. Of course, I'll look to Mr. Holder to make a motion since this lies in his district. One, you can overturn the zoning advisory board's approval of the conditional use. Two, you can uphold the approval of the Two, you can uphold the approval of the conditional use, or if you so desire, you could table it for additional research. So based on those three options, Mr. Holder, I will look to you for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to uphold the zoning advisory board's approval of a conditional use for the subject property.
All right, we have a motion to uphold the approval. Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Bowman. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The motion carries it has been upheld for the conditional use. The next item on the agenda tonight is a comprehensive... The Comprehensive Plan Amendment, COP AM-12-03. James H. Nutt of Marietta, Georgia, requests an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for property located on the north side of Hampton Locust Grove Road and west of Highway 155 South within the Luella Elementary Middle and High School Activity Center in Land Lot 210 of the 2nd District. The request is to amend the future land use map designation from low-density residential to industrial. The property is located within Commission District 2, and our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, planning and zoning in this exhibit number three. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. The applicant is requesting to amend the current future land use map designation from low-density to industrial for 41.8 plus or minus acres. Property is located on the north side of Hampton Locust Grove Road, west of Highway 155. The property is also located within the Luella Elementary Middle and High School Activity Center school node. In evaluating the applicant's request, staff determined that the entire activity center needed to be evaluated rather than just looking at the applicant's requested 41.8 acres. Therefore, staff began evaluating the entire activity center and is recommending multiple amendments to the COP plan and the future land use map. In reviewing the current activity center typology, the current development trends, staff is of the opinion that this activity center should be removed in its entirety. The reasoning behind removing this activity center is based on the fact that during the initial review of the Comprehensive Plan, and more specifically each activity center, the consultant only looked at what was on the ground developed at the time of the Comprehensive Plan. It never took into consideration what was currently zoned or under construction, therefore leaving the activity center now undeveloped, now developed in ways that are not consistent with the typology for this type of center. The activity center currently has 1,344 plus or minus acres, of which 421 of those acres are currently zoned non-residential, or 31.3 percent. The proposed school node typology says 15 percent, or 202 acres, should be non-residential. Based on that current designation of non-residential zoned properties within this activity center, we would have to reduce that by 201 plus or minus acres. That's currently zoned non-residential. It is unlikely that any of the properties that are currently undeveloped but zoned non-residential would ever be developed, anything other than non-residential, therefore creating a unique problem once that activity center would be master-planned. Determining what properties that are currently zoned could no longer be commercial, or non-residential would have to now be non-residential. The applicant's request to amend the future land use designation for the aforementioned property is reasonable, as the property is unlikely to develop as a low-density development within, with the commercial and industrial properties just to the north and east. However, staff is not sure that industrial would be the most appropriate designation for this property. Staff is recommending that it would either be a commercial or a mixed use would be more appropriate to complement the existing developments. The proposed change of removing this activity center from the future land use map would not be unduly detrimental to any of the property owners within this activity centers, as they would be afforded the opportunity to develop their properties in accordance with the future land use map designation assigned to their property, as well as they may amend that future land use designation as outlined in Section 12.0212. Planning staff did recommend denial of the applicant's request to change the designation from low-density to industrial, but does recommend approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment as follows. One, remove the Luella Elementary Middle and High School, school node, activity center designation from the future land use map. Delete all references within the Henry County City's Joint Comprehensive Plan Community Agenda regarding the Luella Elementary Middle and High School Node Activity Center, Appendix C, Pages C1 and C5. And amend the future land use designation for the subject property to commercial, as illustrated on the proposed future land use map that is in your exhibits. The zoning advisory board recommended denial of the applicant's request, but recommended approval of the amendments to the Comprehensive Plan on September 13, as presented by staff. Will answer any questions that the board may have.
City Board member have a question for staff? If not, is the applicant or the applicant's representative here this evening? Yes, sir, if you could, please step to the microphone, and if there's anything you would like to add. If you could, please state your name for the record.
My name's Jeremy. My name is Jim Nutt. I'm from Marietta, Georgia. I own this property along with my brother and sister, and we just wanted to potentially market this property down the road, and we feel like the non-residential uses is the best appropriate designation for it. We met with staff, the planning zoning staff, and understand their concerns about other uses in the area, as well as the impact of truck traffic on Hampton Locust Grove Road. So I think if we did...if you do agree to the commercial, potential commercial zoning down the road, I think it makes it much more marketable, and it is, on its current designation.
Does any board member have a question, Mr. Preston?
Mr. Nutt, you see the staff's recommendations to deny the industrial, but to move forward with the commercial, and you're okay with the staff's recommendations?
Correct. We have discussed it with them and understand their concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Nutt.
Any other questions from the board? If not, since this is a public hearing, I would like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? All right, if there's no further questions from the board, you do have before you a resolution, and that resolution is based on the recommendation for staff, which is denial of the request to amend the future land use map designation, but approval of the amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, make a motion...
To accept what the staff has recommended where we deny the industrial request, but we do accept the staff's recommendations of moving forward with the commercial.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Preston and a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, COP-AM-12-04. Otamazing LLC of Stockbridge, Georgia, requests an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for properties located on the north side of North Henry Boulevard, the west side of Stevens Avenue, and the east side of Neal Avenue in Land Lot 62 of the 12th District. The request is to amend the future land use map designation from medium-density residential to commercial. The property is located within Commission District 4. Again, our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, planning and zoning, in thus exhibit number four. Good evening again.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Board members. This Comprehensive Plan Amendment is for property that's approximately 1.44 plus or minus acres that is located on the north side of North Henry Boulevard, west of Stevens Avenue, and east of Neal Avenue. Currently, there are two parcels in the front that are...that front along North Henry Boulevard and are currently zoned C2. They've been operating as a commercial land use since at least 1992, according to tax assessor records. The remaining portion of the property is zoned R3, single-family residential, and is a vacant undeveloped land. The applicant is proposing to combine the four existing lots, which at this point, the applicant has already combined these four lots into one, and it has been recorded at the courthouse as one lot. By combining these lots, the applicants will be eliminating a non-conforming structure and lot-in combination by increasing the lot area, providing enough area to meet all development regulations such as setbacks and buffers that cannot currently be met. The applicant has a rezoning request that is running concurrently with this request to rezone the property from R3 and C2 to C3, Highway Commercial. The request is not consistent...the rezoning request is not consistent with the future land use map designation of medium-density, however, the request to change that is supported by the following land use policies. Land Use 22, use land effectively to avoid the costs and problems associated with urban sprawl. Land Use 28, redevelop and enhance existing commercial industrial areas within community in reference to new developments in greenfield areas. The applicant's request to amend the future land use map designation for the subject property seems reasonable based on the policies that are outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. Based on staff's evaluation, it is reasonable to believe that it may have been an oversight in designating the two properties along North Henry Boulevard as medium-density, as those parcels have been utilized for commercial land uses since at least 1992. In addition, the two additional parcels is proposed to eliminate the non-conformances on the site as it relates to setbacks and buffers. By allowing the commercial designation to extend to the two parcels located behind the ones along North Henry Boulevard, the applicant would be able to facilitate the required buffers that are not currently existing on the C2 property in the residential. Staff recommended approval of the request to amend the future land use map from medium-density to commercial. The zoning advisory board heard this request on September 13, 2012, and recommended approval of the applicant's request. Will answer any questions that the board has.
City Board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
I don't have a question, but Jeremy, well, I'll tell you what, I'll ask you to put this up afterwards, 'cause it's coming behind...it's another one coming behind that that relates to this. But we have this in the second one, and I'm gonna ask you to put it up once we...well, once we get to...once we get to that one, or unless I need to do it on this one. But just have it ready for me.
Any other question or comment on this? All right. The applicant or their representative, if you're here, if you could please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. By the way, first of all, you all look wonderful in your pink.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Lyle. I reside at 6425 Crest Manor Court, McDonough, Georgia, 30253. Basically with this request, I'll add more when we get to my next section, but to this, we just basically want to take the non-conforming lots and make them conforming.
City Board member have a question for the applicant? All right, if not, because this is a public hearing, I would like to ask if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If there are no further questions from the board, you have before you a resolution, and this is referencing the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and Mr. Bowman, I will look to you for a motion.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item, which if you remember, we changed on the agenda, which is listed as F on your agenda, is RZ-12-06, which is Otamazing LLC of Stockbridge, Georgia, request a rezoning from R3, single-family residential, and C2, general commercial, to C3, highway commercial, for property located on the north side of North Henry Boulevard, the west side of Stevens Avenue, and the east side of Neal Avenue in Land Lot 62 of the 12th District. The property consists of 1.44 plus or minus acres, and the request is for a used car lot. The property is located within Commission District 4. And again, that's gonna be exhibit number six in your books.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Board members. This is the associated request with the previous Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It is for the 1.44 plus or minus acre tract of land that's currently zoned R3 and C2. The applicant is requesting C3 for the purpose of a used car lot. As we talked about in the previous request, there were existing four lots, two of them zoned C2, two of them zoned R3. On October the 8th, 2012, the applicant did record this as one lot, so it is now one lot, and it will be conforming to all of the current C2 zoning district requirements, and if the property were to be rezoned, it would then be in compliance with any of the C3. There's currently an existing 2,180 square foot building. The applicant is not proposing at this time to add any additional buildings, just utilize the existing buildings. By combining these four lots, again, they did make these lots that were non-conforming The two existing undeveloped properties that were located to the north of this are currently heavily wooded and would be a great undisturbed buffer between the commercial land uses and any existing or future residential developments to the north. Staff would recommend making the required 40-foot buffer an undisturbed buffer, and it could even possibly increase that buffer from 40 feet if the board so chose. While the request was not consistent with the future land use map designation for commercial, it does support the policies, again, of the Comprehensive Plan, and upon the last action by this board, making it commercial, it is now consistent. Staff did recommend approval of this request with six conditions. The zoning advisory board heard this request on September 13, 2012, and recommended approval with seven conditions. I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Does anyone have a question? Mr. Holder?
Yeah, but I have two. First one being, and I don't think you have the answer to this, but how did this piece of property escape being annexed by the city of Stockbridge?
Shh, don't tell one.
Yeah. I would venture to think it probably has a lot to do with the property owner not of requesting it to go into the city at this point.
It doesn't matter. There are methods that you can be forced in. The second one, the second question is, why is number one a condition? Because that is a given.
It is. It's a standard condition that we place on all rezoning requests, so that if applicants aren't building anything new, that they're aware that they're gonna still have to meet all building and fire code and accessibility codes. If the building may not currently meet it, they'd have to bring it up to standard. Just as a reminder.
I just wondered why that was a condition of zoning, though, because those are standard procedures that they would have to comply with anyhow.
Mr. Bowman?
I do have one. I could take it either way. I could wait for the applicant, but I think I'll go ahead and do it now. Mr. Baker actually owns that property that he will be leasing. He also owns the vacant property that's directly behind it. It's on the...that's why I asked you to put it up. It's not real...you can't see it real good on mine, but I can see it very well on this one. And this is probably more of a legal question that you or someone would have to answer for me. What he would like to do, because he owns both pieces of property, is have the 40-foot undisturbed buffer between this...on the backside of this piece of property here, where the South 87 dot 55 dot 34. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we don't have any legal issues with that, because he owns both...he owns both pieces of property, so is that something...I mean, can that be put on that piece of property, the 40-foot buffer?
In talking with Sherri, it is something that we can look at administratively, because he does own currently, there were six lots, now there's only three lots with the combining of the four. The ordinance does require that 40-foot buffer, and it just says that the developer will provide that, being that the developer owns all four lots, he could provide it on the additional lot.
So he can provide that, Mr. Baker's in the audience, so he can provide the 40-foot on the backside, on his...basically, it's all his, but on the other side of this iron pin found, that piece. That's what I was wanting to make sure of. He's agreed to that, so I wanted to make sure that that would not be an issue. That clears that up for me, Madam Chair, so we can go ahead and move on with the applicant's request.
And one other thing I'd like to add also, is because the parcels have already been combined, Condition Number Two states that all four parcels will be combined, and that it would be done before any permit or business license was done. Since that's already been done and recorded, we can remove... Since that's already been done and recorded, we can remove that condition and still just have six instead of seven, but that's just for your information.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one question.
Mr. Stame?
Just a point of clarification. You say all four have become one now, correct?
That is correct. The front four lots were recorded on the 8th of this month at the courthouse, and we have received a copy of that from them showing that it's been recorded.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, and I don't know if we need to do this, call the applicant forward. Ms. Lyle, is there anything you wish to add? I hate for you to walk all the way back up here if you don't have anything to add or if the board doesn't have a question or comment for you.
Actually, she had asked me to come back up. If you do that, of course, I'll let you come up. My name is Jim Baker. I reside at 4121 Perrin Point in Atlanta. I've owned this property for 42 years. I'm not sure the city or I either one, Warren knows whether it ever was in the city or not, but I can take you back to some good history up there in the early 70s. But this was actually always used as a commercial lot, believe it or not. At one time, all the trees were gone on all six lots, and there was a Buddy's Camper lot there in 1971, 2, and 3. It then became Patrick Rinaldi and several others, CNC and many others, but effectively on, and I appreciate you clearing up for us on the buffer, because what we were intending to do when we, there's six lots there, and what we've accomplished is moving the four lots together in the front. There's still two lots behind there, which is, which we'll establish the buffer on, but this allows it to be put into a conforming use, because even though the buildings have been there all these years, technically, we were not conforming, and that wasn't what we were trying to. I hope that not only will you see this young lady's done a fine job in, I think, improving what was already there for 42 years, the timeliness of both my staff, one young lady who's here, along with the lessee, have been prudent and quick to do everything that the county has asked. We were just supposed to do it at some point prior to opening. I was happy to see that they did it well in advance of opening, and I appreciate your consideration. Any other questions you have, I'd be glad to answer.
I have one question, Mr. Baker, concerning that buffer. Me and Mr. Bowman were talking about this today. Is that tree buffer inside the fence or on the outside?
It's the outside. In fact, the inside defense is very little of the property, but the buffer is actually, when you see, what you see there technically used to be four lots, and they were 110 to 100-foot per depth lot. So what you actually see there is roughly 210 feet or so. Then there's an additional 100 to 110 feet behind there that will be, you know, that is maintained where the buffer will be established on that as well. Whereas we only combined the four lots, but I actually own six of them. If you went to an old tax assessor map, you'd see three lots on Stevens and three lots on Neal, but we've now combined those four, which makes just one partial, obviously easier for the tax assessor and everybody else as well, and I appreciate your consideration.
Are you going to move the fence to incorporate the buffer? Or is it just, it's just going to stay on there?
Not at this time, but we will, and obviously it'll be established by this plat, by the, those rear property lines have been put in, because this is a brand-new survey that we did just have made, and the surveyor has been out there, but we're not really going to go to that expense at this time, so, you know, that will stay there.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I call for public comment? Or did I already call for public comment on this one? I haven't. Okay, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? All right, if there's no further questions from the board, you have before you a resolution with the request that condition number two be removed, because that's already been taken care of, which leaves six conditions, and I will look to you, Mr. Bowman, for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it and that the 40-foot buffer be established on the backside of the line that we talked about, that you have there on yours, as long as we're good with that. And I think we are, so, from everything I've heard, we are. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve with that 40-foot buffer being there.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and a second by Mr. Stame. Y'all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, the next item on the agenda is rezoning, RZ-12-05, which is Donna Bryson of Lilburn, Georgia, request a rezoning from RMH, which is Mobile or Manufactured Home Development, to C3 Highway Commercial for property located at the northwest corner of Boulevard Drive and Wilson Road, tract 2 slash lot 3 of Pine Valley Estate Subdivision and Land Lot 33 of the 12th District. The property consists of 1.062 plus or minus acres, and the request is for outside storage of trucks, trailers, and equipment. The property is located within Commission District Four. Our presenter is Wanda Moore, planning and zoning, exhibit number five. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As stated, the applicant is requesting to rezone from RMH Mobile Home or Manufactured Home Development District to C3 Highway Commercial District to allow for outdoor storage of equipment and trailers. Proposed improvements include grading of site, gravel material installed for parking area, and secure fencing. The flume designates the area for commercial land use. Staff has recommended approval with seven conditions. The zoning advisory board met on September 13th and approved the request with two additional conditions, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have a question for Ms. Moore? All right, at this time, I would like to ask if the applicant is in the audience or a representative, if you would, please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate you entertaining our application tonight for the rezoning of the subject tract. My name is Terry Boomer. I'm the president of Civil Consulting Engineers in Canton, Georgia. The, as the stat indicated, we're looking to rezone the property consistent with the flume, the future land use map, and adjacent commercial zoning. We would like to take, we have agreed the, to the conditions that staff has presented and to one of the conditions that the planning commission has presented. We do not want to limit our use to only outside storage. We would like to keep our options open going forward for, for economic value of the property. We've owned the property for approximately a year now. The applicant, who is here, Ms. Donna Bryson, I'm a civil engineer, and I'm here on a technical advisory capacity in, as preparation of the plans and land development plans going forward. Ms. Bryson is a, is a paving contractor, has Henry County contracts and projects, and as such, needs a place for overflow equipment rather than to haul it back forth to Gwinnett County Headquarters. And this piece of property became available consistent with the land use plan and the surrounding zonings, and she felt it, she's had it for a year now, and feels like it was, lends itself well to doing what her intent, her short-term intent is. At this time, she does not intend on building a structure, but in the future, does not want to be limited from a structure being placed on the property. And that's all I have. If you need, if you have any questions about operations or use, Ms. Bryson's available to answer those questions. Anything technical, merit-wise, civil engineering, land planning, I can answer.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant's representative? Mr. Bowman?
Unlike the previous, that I don't understand how it got into commercial. I'm not real sure how Wilson Road was put into commercial. I'm looking at it on the future land use map. However, Boulevard Drive is, is a small road that leads into a subdivision as well as Wilson Drive. In the, I'm very, very familiar with this, because if you just come on up there just a little further, you'll see Bellamy Court and Bellamy Place. That's where my office is, and I go by this property every day and have been, I guess, since 1991 or two. I can't remember exactly when I built my office in there, but I fail to understand how, as a matter of fact, I have to call Terry on a number of occasions, because there's a lot of potholes right there at that entrance that we have to repair. I don't understand how we could get equipment and trucks and other thing in there to do that with. I really don't. But I have a, an issue with that being cut out of a subdivision. Don't know how it happened, but it did happen, just like I don't know how the other one ended up being where it's at. You say you want to reserve your right to do something in the future. I mean, what would that be?
We have no future plans. It just does not seem prudent to purchase a piece of property and have it rezoned and then limit your, your use. In consulting with the zoning maps and the future land use maps, this property presented itself. With regards to your opening question about that roadway, we've spoken with the DOT, and as I said, the owner is a paving contractor, and we've agreed to pave that road to the entrance.
Well, I'm looking at the current zoning map, and obviously, the current zoning map is zoned RMH, which is residential manufactured housing, which is what that has been for an awfully long time, and the rest of Wilson Road is zoned R3 or R4. It may be zoned R4, just I can't tell. The colors are pretty close, so, and I know that State Route 42, that that property's zoned commercial, because it fronts 42, and it should be zoned commercial. I just, I have a substantial amount of issues with, with this particular request, but at this time, I will reserve any other comments. Let you go ahead, Madam Chair, with people that are foreign or that are Spanish.
Before I call for public comment, does any other board member have a question for either staff or the applicant's, or applicant's representative? If not, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning request. Yes, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, it's Donna Bryson, 818 Tom Smith Road, Lilburn, Georgia. And I just wanted to say that we were awarded a contract with Henry County to resurface multiple streets within Henry County, so we'll be out here for an extensive period of time, and it would be of great use to us to be able to locate our equipment there and not leave it, you know, you see equipment on sides of roads and stuff, and we wanted it for that purpose also, and to store a minimal amount of material in bins, recycled asphalt, as we also mill the roads.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Thank you, Ms. Bryson. If not, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition. If you could, please state your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Yes, I'm Sheila Jones. I live at 65 Boulevard Drive, two doors up on Boulevard Drive from this property. I have some pictures here, if y'all would like to review them, of the homes that surround this property, and I have a petition that I presented at the zoning board, but I've added addresses and printed names of the people that have signed it. I think there's like 35 within the neighborhood, just right in that area, that has signed it. There's like seven other people to speak, so I just want to kind of get my point across that this is residential and...
There you go. Thank you, I'm sorry.
And I understand she does paving for Henry County and all, and that would probably be the only benefit for this to go C3 in our neighborhood, is our road might get fixed. In the past, she has dropped asphalt on that property and has had to remove it. I believe she owns some property right up off 42 that backs Wilson Road to the, further up towards Stockbridge, that I've seen them drive their equipment on Wilson Road to that property when they was clearing it. I understand she owns another piece of property that I think's commercial, over around Bellamy, somewhere where his office is. So I don't understand why she wants to come in and interrupt our neighborhood when she already has commercial property that comes off 42, if I'm correct with that. I might be wrong, that she cannot use that. She bought this with it being residential, and Mr. Boomer, I think is his name, had stated in the other meeting that her intent was to do this all alone, without even taking in consideration of the neighborhood or anything like that. And now I just heard her add that she wants to do asphalt bin storage and everything. And you're talking about bringing that, my dad done construction for 30 years. I've heard that equipment. They start up at sunup, and now they work at night. Years ago, they didn't. I mean, so you're talking about the buffer would not even preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
My name is Maddie Forcher, and I live at 5 Highland Circle, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. Own the house at 125 Wilson Road, next to Lot 3. I live across Wilson Road in front of 125 Wilson Road. I am asking the board not to approve C3 in our neighborhood. The fence would have to be very high for us not to see the trucks and machinery. Also, the noise and the diesel smoke and dust would be hazardous to our health. My husband has COPD, also Wagner's granulatosis in his sinuses and lungs. Please do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
I'm Irene Cruz, and my address is 60 Boulevard Drive. I'm right across the road from where this meets Wilson Road and Boulevard Drive. I'm on Boulevard. And I think that C3 commercial should not be as close to residential as the property at the corner of Boulevard Drive and Wilson Road, and for a number of reasons. The trucks, the heavy-duty equipment can be very loud and, at night, unbearable, and calling the police every night or so would also be pretty bad. So it would also take away the serenity of my home. I know that they have been talking about all the trailers and the homes that are whatever, but in the past 10 years, I have put more than $100,000 in that house, and believe me, it's my home, and I love it, and I don't want it interrupted. And the serenity of my home and the pride I have in my home, it would devalue my house, my property, and that of my neighbors. We all know the economy is bringing our property down and everything, but with that, it could come back up. But when it comes to devaluating your property with commercial being in there, you don't get that back. Your property is devaluated, and that's it. And so I couldn't sell my home. If I did, I, no one would buy it, not across the road from that type of commercial property. No one would. I wouldn't if I wasn't already there. And so therefore, I would lose a tremendous amount of my money, just because one woman wants to store some heavy-duty equipment here, and, and obviously is not concerned about the people, that she's going to be hurting, not, not just in one way, but a number of ways. And the 42 Highway, it's already very heavily traveled. It's very difficult sometimes to actually get on the 42 Highway from Boulevard. I mean, you can sit there for a long time just waiting to get out, and having more trucks coming in would, would make that much worse. So that, and then there's potholes up there now, and we don't need more trucks in there for that. So I'm concerned about accidents happening there where Boulevard Drive and 42 Highway come together. It would be bad if accidents happened with trucks and small cars. And I don't want to sell my home. I've been in my home for 52 years, and that's a long time. It's my home. It's my house. I can't imagine anywhere else being my home. I couldn't consider that, because I've been here a long time, living in that house. And after 52 years, it is my home, and the way it's feeling right now, with all this coming up, I... coming up, I feel as though I'm in a trap and unable to do anything about it because I couldn't sell my house and I don't want to sell my house. But I don't want all the noise, the complications and all the rest that come along with what this property would do to us if we had it to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Can you put up a picture of the aerial map?
Yes, sir.
And show us exactly where Boulevard is located on the map?
Is that enough content or do you need a...
I can see it here, but show me where, okay, I see it.
I'm sorry?
I see it.
Okay. This is, um, the location for Ms. Cruz that was just speaking. And the house, fire. Um, that's, um, the owner. Come on, it's after. Do you have another question, Mr. Holmes? Yes, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Florence M. Forcher. I live at, uh, 15 Highland Circle. Of course, I have COPD, my wife has a very infectious lung disease that she has to live on oxygen sometimes and everything, of course, we don't want it. I've been in construction for several years, I know what the equipment, um, you know, how the dust and the sound and everything does. And we, we really don't want it in our neighborhood, you know, interrupting us. But like, like they said earlier, lady owns several pieces of property. Uh, there at, uh, D-Birds, she owns that one right there, that's off of 42 and Wilson Road. Then she owns, uh, property over here in Bellamy Park. You know, why didn't she put it there instead of coming and interrupting our neighborhood? I mean, she's got more land there than what she's wanting to get rezoned. Of course, when you ride by, you see for sale signs, so it makes me think that she wants to get it commercial so she can make more money off it when she sells it. You know, we wouldn't mind a new home, a new trailer or whatever, but we don't want commercial in there. And we would really appreciate it if y'all would vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, if you could step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Belinda Schwartz, I live at 95 Wilson Road, have lived there 23 years. Resonant property inside this neighborhood, these are well-maintained homes. I mean, that is a mobile home lot, but Wilson Road is well-maintained homes. Um, it would greatly impact our neighborhood in a negative way. We don't want the commercial vehicles in our neighborhood driving through our residential streets. The section of Boulevard Drive between Highway 42 and Wilson Road is heavily traveled, with traffic going to the convenience store, to the Dollar General, that's also the safest way to enter and exit this neighborhood. The other entrances, uh, because of the hilly nature of Highway 42, give you limited visibility. Uh, I was surprised the zoning board recommended approving this when by their own admission, they had no idea what types of businesses could go on a C3. Um, I know myself that a garbage company, trucking companies, any of these could park their equipment on this property if it's zoned C3. It, she's asked for a specific use, but once it's zoned, it does not have to maintain that use. I actually feel too that this is only for resale value. That, that's why she is requesting this. She does have property that already borders 42, C3 is a highway commercial. Those lots are undeveloped, I don't understand why those lots are not used for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, if you could, please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Thank you, I'm Sarah Clary and I'm a friend of Irene Cruz and her neighbor as well. I put a flyer in front of you to show you the serenity and the well-kept, uh, area. Irene Cruz, Irene is standing in front of the beautiful old oak tree that she says, "I watched it grow from a seedling." Here Irene stands and it's dark, but the sun was nice and bright. There's a blue blossom on the hydrangea that, uh, she says, "My mother gave us that when our sons died." And you see the nice, nicely painted, uh, double car garage and nicely paved driveway and this, um, is me, along with some other friends. We went over to Irene's after lunch Sunday and sat on her beautiful, long, enclosed screen porch. I doubt say not many people have such nice, long screen porches down the side of their house. And at the bottom is her nice deck, up the sliding glass door, which is outside her dining area. Uh, as far as value, there's no value to put on a home place, but this truly has monetary value. And as to the rezoning of that property, there's no way you can just rezone that property for that purpose. You would have to rezone the whole community to keep out the sound of the equipment, the sight of the equipment and the stench of asphalt and diesel fuel.
Thank you. It's about a minute and 40 seconds. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the applicant's request?
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I forgot to add it because I left my notes up here, I think. But also, I remember Mr. Boomer mentioning also before that he asked, uh, in here that, uh, if the conditions placed on the side of the applicant, be, if she did not use this property, would they still be required to do the conditions? That's another reason that makes me think she's just wanting to bring up value to sell. She might use it for a little while, but, um, that made me think that they might want to just bring up their value to sell and, and of course, it's done in grease hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stamey?
Wanda, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
They're asking for C3, which is highway commercial, and this piece doesn't even hit a highway.
Yes, sir.
How did that happen? And I could see if it was part of a, the bigger track in front.
Uh, excuse me. Um, as far as the, uh, the criteria that was evaluated for the staff report, the future land use map obviously indicates the area as commercial. The application came in as, uh, commercial because they needed it for outdoor storage. The outdoor storage designation is only permissible in C3. We have no other provision where we can permit outdoor storage except for industrial use. So the application came in as, uh, commercial, use C3 for that outdoor storage and that was the only thing that was included in the application. Um, as designated a highway commercial, I hope you, reading through the staff report, saw the conflict as far as the recommendation goes. The future land use ma, map doesn't designate different degrees of commercial. State Route 42 is designated on our CTP as one of our major transportation corridors. It's defined by the state as a truck route. The proximity of this property to 42 lends itself as far as access goes and access management as part of the CTP plan. As plans would go forward for this area, um, access into adjacent properties would be regulated based on median cuts. And since State Route 42 has a lot of development, the CTP recommends an 80-foot right of way, um, to be maintained. And within that, you would only have certain, um, availability for access into these commercial parcels. So it encourages parcels to be combined, to be developed more jointly instead of dysfunctional commercial with a lot of curb cuts. So, uh, with the designation on the flume, the relation to State Route 42, the application that came in as, uh, commercial, uh, those are all some of the, you know, criteria that were considered when making the recommendation.
Are there any easements from the front of the truck stop area back to this piece of property?
Yes, sir, there's... This is a, a survey plant that shows a 30-foot easement that's on the, um, south property And it exists now. It's a drive easement, the actual existing driveway that runs or that's located off of, um, the interior street of Wilson Road actually is not located within the drive easement, like it should be.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can you put the future land use map back up there?
I would like to as well, just, uh, for the community as well as for the commissioners, what's a challenge oftentimes is when we have joint comprehensive plans that have gone before and gone out in the community, um, decisions were made by stakeholders, uh, the community involvement, et cetera, that went into the, the designation of the flume and commercial. Oftentimes, residents don't feel the impact until development is at this stage. And existing commercial, C3, C2 and C1 in the area, this map indicates property that's already zoned commercial, C3, C2, C1, and is vacant. The hatched areas on this map indicate the properties that are already zoned, whether it's C3 down to R3, that are currently vacant. And at this, this stage, it's open to be reverted back to the original zoning, which would be a whole nother case. But I, I would like the residents of the area to understand as well that, yeah, regardless of what happens here, it's something they should, um, invest in and, and understand what's going on because of the proximity to commercial that's already zoned in their neighborhood.
Put the future land use map back up there, Wanda.
That's where I think the mistake came in, Commissioner Stamey, is because in the future land use map, it's almost impossible to go and look at every area of the county when a consultant comes in to assist with that. And what they were doing in, with this particular parcel is they were making the natural assumption that in the future, because it lies between four roads basically, that the natural progress would be to, um, incorporate all that into a commercial area.
Yeah.
Never going out there and looking to see that this, that this piece of property sits right in front of a residential subdivision is actually part of that subdivision. It's not a sub...
That's right.
It is, it was zoned in as part of that subdivision. And we don't see that often, but every once in a while, you'll see the future land use map come up and it's not compatible with what's on the ground.
Yeah.
Wanda, also, I'm still hung up on the easement, so excuse me.
Oh, this is...
But is the easement even, it's saying right here that it may no longer legally exist, is that easement even even there anymore?
It's, uh, it's a...
I mean, we didn't do title search on it and I know that to find out, but I'm not even sure that the easement even exists anymore.
We, we aren't aware, DOT, our Henry County DOT provided the research and, and that exhibit to indicate at, at some point, there was an exhibit, whether or not it's existing now.
Well, you can read on the plant, it says may no longer legally exist, correct?
Correct. And also the one that Terry Boomer presented, but that's not our onus to, to prove that one way or the other, would be the applicant's. Because it will impact if the property went forward with any type of commercial or any other type of resident, other than residential use, no buffer would be allowed in that easement. So, any type of buffer that's required for commercial or ONI use would be, have to be located outside of that easement, which would impact the usability of the property that's left over.
But commercial to residential...
Forty feet.
They would be required to do the 40 feet against the, I guess it would be the Wilson Road, correct?
Forty feet, um, on the south.
Is that Wilson?
Wilson Road is a, is a non-zoned public land, but, uh, the 20 feet could be accommodated with a fence, that's a, a provision that's allowed in the ordinance as well. So at the very least, you would have 50 feet of buffer between residential and non-residential use.
Or commercial. Hard, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Holder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to make a comment in, in regard to, uh, what Ms. Schwartz said earlier about not being able to understand why the ZAB approved it.
Yes.
And let me tell you the why, and, and Ms. Moore has kind of danced around it, but here's the reason. The ZAB of the Zoning Advisory Board is not a discretionary board. It's not, they do not have discretionary powers, it's not, they are, are a recommending body, they're an advisory board. The discretionary part of the process comes with the Board of Commissioners, which are the people that you have elected. That is why if the future land use map showed that as being commercial, they had no choice but to say, "Okay, we've got to approve this." I think one thing that Ms. Moore, and I'm going to ask you this, uh, even though this was zoned commercial, and, and I think, I was sitting here when it was done, I wa, I'm not the commissioner from that district, but I'm certain, I was certainly here, it's because of this block of proc, of property in the proximity to Highway 42, I mean, it's very clear. But Ms. Moore, that is, it's just that. It does not say what level of commercial it's that.
That's right.
It just says, "This is potential commercial property," is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, with that, I wanted to clarify the fact and to tell Ms. Schwartz, that is the reason that the ZAB did what they had to do. And it's up to the Board of Commissioners now to either approve, deny. We have the discretion of doing that, they don't, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Bowman?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions? Did you have any comments that you'd like to make before, um, I've looked to you to, uh, make a motion in regards to this, you have, before you have resolution and I'll look to you since this is in your district.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to make a motion. The motion is going to be to deny C3's, uh, commercial, that's the highest commercial you could ask for. Uh, what, what we have here is, we do have a future land use map that does have our discretion and we can, by our discretion, deny this. I'm going to make the motion that we deny it. You know, there's, there could be some other things in the future that may come through and we may be able to have to handle something like an ONI or something of that nature. However, because, uh, this is a future land use map, it does not state that it's a future land use map that everything in there is C3. So I make a motion that the, we deny the, the zoning request.
We have a motion on the floor to deny, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0, the item has been denied. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, may I submit for matter of record the signatures with the addresses as well as the site photos?
If you would, uh, submit those to the county clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the county manager contract.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the county manager contract. And I will be the presenter on this. You have a handout in front of you. As most of you were, well, actually, all of you were on the board at the time, Mr. Alletta was appointed to the position of county manager in March of this year. In the past, at least as far as I've been here, and I think Mr. Holder will agree, the time that he has been on the board, every county manager that Henry County has had has had a contract. When Mr. Alletta was appointed to county manager, a personnel action form was signed which outlined his salary and also his vacation time, but we never formally adopted his contract. You have before you our employment agreement that is in keeping with every contract we've had with all previous county managers, which outlines his annual salary of $144,000, as was agreed upon by the board, $500 a month in a personal car allowance and with a one-year term. That one-year term will be retroactive back to March of this year, meaning that his contract will be up for renewal in March of '13. And if there's no further questions from the board on this or any comments that you'd like to make, I'll look to the board for a motion. Mr. Preston?
I received, I had a few inquiries just asking, the effective date does go back to March, so this does not bind any future boards longer than the March period of next year, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
And I noticed when I reviewed, there's still a termination clause, both with cause and without cause. The only difference being that if it's with cause, there's no payment, but if it's without cause, there's a 90-day, a three-month severance package.
That is correct. And that has been standard with all prior county managers as well. This is not giving this county manager anything any different than previous county managers, but you are correct in that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just agree with you because some of the county managers had more severance than three months.
Not since I've been on the board.
No, but some of them have.
You're correct.
So the three months is fairly standard, but there have been county managers that have had in excess of 90 days.
I think the one prior to me taking office had a six-month severance in that contract.
I'm just going to tell you that...
Okay. Mr. Bowman?
For the record, all the other county managers have had them. And this is because so much has been going on and we had probably the worst budget we've ever had to work through and just numbers and numbers and numbers of special call meetings and things that kept us, you know, going. All this is, is cleaning up and oversight. That's my comment. And that's my opinion. That does not reflect the board's opinion, but that's my opinion, so...
You're absolutely correct. This should have been done in March during the time of the appointment, but we did get caught up with the budget and everything else and it just was not done as it should have been.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments on this item? If not, I'll look to a board member for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say one thing and that was Ms. Cruz was talking about wearing the paper of cancer.
Yes, ma'am.
And I had spoken to you before and...
Yes, ma'am. We talked, I talked with you on the phone, yes, ma'am.
And I was talking about the cancer that you were talking about a while ago and I wanted to thank everyone else because I had it as well and you're still my friends.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, no one has signed up for public comment. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session? Mr. County Manager?
Amen.
Upcoming meetings and events. Monday, November the 5th at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, November 6th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, November 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, November 20th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular meetings. I also want to remind our citizens that early voting has already started in Henry County. And just as an update, I believe on Monday, 1,800 people voted early, if I read correctly the little press release that went out.
I went up there Monday and couldn't find a parking space.
Absolutely phenomenal. And I do want you to know, it is not too late to vote by mail. There's a, you can download an absentee ballot request form from the county website. You can fax that in and they will in turn mail a ballot to your home and you can vote from the comfort of your home. And I just want to encourage citizens to please exercise your right to vote because the men and women of our armed services have put their life on the line to assure that we have that right to do so. And if there's no further business to come before the board this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.